We'll call the Wilmer City Council Meeting to order for Monday, December 17th. Roll call.
Mayor Coven.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson. Here. Christensen.
Here.
Schwantes.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Mesky.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under proposed additions or deletions to the agenda, all of these will be added to the end of the agenda. Planning Development Director, job description. Finance Committee, report. Public Works Committee. Community Development Committee. Legacy Grant. And the issue of early retirement program with an end date to be made a decision by the council.
Mark. Wolten and Mick.
Correct. That's under Committee Development.
Okay.
Anything else other than that to be moved to the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, I'll take a motion to accept the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Those are made in second, a discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next are the consent items. Ms. Thompson.
On tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the city council meeting minutes of December 3rd, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes of December 10th, Planning Commission minutes of December 5th, an application for exempt permit from the Fraternal Order of Eagles Auxiliary, temporary on-sale liquor license application from Ducks Unlimited, 2019 on-sale Sunday liquor license renewals, a resolution accepting Project 1803A and authorizing final payment, resolution for non-union health insurance for the years 2019 to 2020, reappointment as members of the Pioneer Library Board Suzanne Nelson, Airport Commission Sandy Gardner, application for appointment as members of Planning Commission Christina Nelson, Zoning Appeals Board Dan Rigstad and Sandana Galman-Ashley. For council's acceptance, the Police Department Statistics for the month of November, Fire Department Statistics for the month of November, Building Inspection Report for the month of November, and the Accounts Payable Report for November 29th through December 12th, 2018. For council's information, applications for appointment to the Park and Recreation Board of Thomas Gilbertson, Abdi Rahin Hussein, Kim Madsen, Andy Ogdal, Jim Anderson, Valerie Swanson, and Rachel Skreetvee.
Motion to, second.
Motion made in second to approve the consent agendas items as presented. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
I would just ask to have G and H pulled just for review.
Anything else? So with all the items with the exception of G and H, all in favor, a roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Next, councilmember Nelson, under G, resolution accepting Project 1803A and authorizing final payment.
Just wanted to have it reviewed before we approved it.
Mayor, members of the council, in front of you is 1803, project number 1803A, reconstruction of 19th Street from Highway 12 to Gordon Avenue. It was a short section of concrete street that we did this summer, and it was one of the projects that we were able to complete in its entirety this summer, and so what you have in front of you is the approval of the final payment for that project.
No holdings or any, it's all done, right?
It's all done.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve that one.
Second. Motion made in second to approve item 5G, resolution accepting Project 1803A and authorizing final payment. Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is resolution for non-union health insurance for 2019, 2020. Councilmember Nelson.
I just would ask for clarification or reviewing resources to review it.
This is a resolution modifying the resolution that we passed back in August 6th for the non-union's health insurance. Since the non-union employees will be going to PEAP in 2019 and 2020, we needed to update the resolution under the advice from our labor attorney.
Everything stayed the same, it's just it wasn't included in the previous resolution?
Exactly. This one specifies that they'll be on PEAP in 2019 and 2020.
Okay. Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve.
I had a question.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under A and B, what are the premiums? What's the amount?
It is $5,1960 for single, and then, I'm sorry, I do not have the family one in front of me. I believe it's 1,300 something.
Mr. Holland, do you know those numbers?
And I'm wondering why they weren't there. I mean, it's $5,1960 you said for...
That's what it is for this year. We obviously don't know what it will be in 2020 yet, that's why it's not included in the resolution.
Would you like it added to the resolution?
I think they should be, it's just for the public to know. I mean, they should know what we're paying for these non-union group of people. And then another question. Under C, if the annual deductible amounts of the HSA plan are greater than the legal annual contribution limit, then the difference between the two will be paid to the employee or their healthcare provider, or as otherwise authorized by law. If an employee enrolled in the HSA plan experiences a hardship during the year, he or she may ask in writing to the city administrator for the city's full annual contribution deposited in the employee's HSA instead of the monthly. What if that employee has a hardship in January and leaves in June?
The policy doesn't address if that happened. I believe the thinking behind it is if they have to pay their full premium in January, that's still the premium they have to pay for the full year, even if they aren't an employee for the full year. But this was in the previous resolution as well, and it mirrors what is in our union contracts as well. So that section is not new.
So they're guaranteed the contribution annually, but we're paying it monthly?
Yes, they get a contribution every pay period, and then if they experience a hardship during the year, they need to provide some proof in order to, and appeal to the administrator for the full contribution. They have the final say whether to approve or reject it.
Okay, so then they can use the full contribution any month?
Yes, if they provide proof of a hardship that they would need that money immediately.
But my question is, if they only work six months of that year and then they leave, and they use the full contribution, is that in the contract that way also?
It doesn't say that they must pay that amount back. It never addresses that in any of the contracts.
Well, it's something that probably should be in there. Instead of giving them a blank check in January or February.
We could change that for the non-union employees, I suppose, but it is in the union contracts. The other city employees will be getting, do have that in their contracts.
Okay, but this is...
But we could withhold that from the non-union employees.
What does the rest of the council think?
It should be consistent. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Mesky.
Do the union contracts have a clawback provision if they use all of that as well?
There is not a payback provision in any of the contracts if they leave employment mid-year and they receive the full amount.
Well, that could be, I mean, it's a highly unlikely situation, but it could exist, and maybe that's something that we need to consider for the next contract negotiation piece for sure.
Yes.
As a caveat, that, you know, if you expend everything within a certain period of time in a six-month window, whatever, that you will pay back these six months. That's something we could look at.
If I may, standard procedure, when you leave an employment and you receive any type of benefit in advance, whether it's for travel, whether it's for health insurance, whether it's for equipment, and you owe money to the city, at that time, when we do your final pay, we can deduct that final amount from that paycheck. If there's not money left in that paycheck, we can later recoup that through a billing system. And that's normal procedure. You don't have to have that in a written policy or anything, but I've done that for years, especially as a finance and payroll officer. It's legal. You owe the city, you owe the company money, you have to pay it back.
Or we could just eliminate that paragraph. Just take it out.
Councilmember Osmus.
I think that's just allowing them the opportunity to access the funds if they have a medical emergency.
Yes, exactly.
So that needs to be in there, to be able to do that.
I know that was a huge concern, and switching to an only HSA plan is what if we do have a surgery in January and we don't have the full deductible amount at that time from the city? I know that was how it got put in to the other contracts.
Well, let's see how far it'll go. I'll make a motion to eliminate that paragraph. I'll second him. Motion made in second to eliminate the paragraph that talks about the early payment. So basically, you're saying if an employee enrolled in the HSA plan experiences a hardship, that paragraph?
Correct.
Okay, so basically, it's the last sentence is what you're asking to remove, correct?
Correct.
So there is an amendment that has been suggested to the motion that's on the table. Discussion on the amendment. Councilmember Mesky.
So if an employee experienced a hardship, there would be no ability then to tap into future months of contribution? Is that what we're eliminating?
Correct. It's a benefit that, they're getting in the monthly benefit, and then they should've, the prior year, they may have rolled over their HSA account and had that money in there. We're talking about things that might not happen very often, and they should have some money in that HSA.
Councilmember Nelson, followed by Schwantes.
Thank you. I think the consistency with what we've done, I am not disagreeing with the concept of this. I think the question is more about if they leave, do they pay it back versus the ability to get it, and since we have put that in all the other contracts, I think it should be looked at. This isn't a contract, I understand that, but I think we should be consistent with what we're doing and make sure that we look at our ability to recoup if someone leaves.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Could you tell me how many non-union employees we have?
We have 11.
11. 11 people we're talking about, and we're going to make an inconsistency that would, you know, this is a decision for the administrator to be able to make, and I think there's a trust level we can put in him that in the event that this should happen to one out of 11 people, I can't vote for taking it out. I think it needs to be left in.
We're ready to vote.
I'll withdraw my motion.
I'll draw my second. The amendment has been withdrawn.
I don't think we had a motion either.
We did.
Didn't we?
Yeah, there was a motion to file that particular item, and I don't remember who was it seconded.
And he withdrew his second.
Well, she's talking about the original motion.
Motion.
Not the amendment. I thought there was a motion on the amendment, or on that item.
I'll just make the motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Approve H.
Motion made in second to approve item H on the consent agenda item, which is resolution Non-Union Health Insurance 2019/2020. Discussion, Councilmember Mesky.
I'd still bring up, I think, and even though if we wanted consistency, the next time union contracts are up, that this is something that we talk about and deal with at that time.
Additional discussion. Councilmember Mesky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's one of the reasons I brought it up. Things like this need to be discussed at a labor meeting, where we can go over the wording of what we're giving the employees and what we're expected to give them, and I know it's consistent with the union contracts, but it should be looked at the next time that it's brought up. Thank you.
Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Next is the Wilmer City Council Open Forum. First person on the agenda is Mr. Bob Score. If you could just state your name and if you reside in the city or outside of the city.
First of all, I'm back. Bob Score, a non-resident. I came back tonight to thank Mr. Christensen for 24 years of his service to his ward, in which I lived for just about 66 years. I ran into some people today that want to thank you also for being the watchdog on the council for Wilmer, and they're all going to miss you, as I will. We didn't always agree on everything, but we could agree to disagree, unlike others in this room and in this city. Like myself, we're not afraid to speak up. Where's your timer at, by the way?
The city clerk keeps track of the time.
Oh, I can't see it. Okay, anyway, Ron and I aren't afraid to speak our piece because we feel it's right. We have, Ron, I give you credit for standing tall for what you've gone through in the last couple of years, what people put you through, and what I've gone through. The Tribune is not afraid to write about you or me, but on other issues with other people in this room, it's not stated in the paper, their issues. That's not fair. The other thing is, the candy wrapper, there's a couple people in this room who took my freedom of speech away. That issue is not resolved yet, which it will be. That's not a threat, I'm just saying. We're going to get to the bottom of this and find out what's going on to make it fair for everybody to have freedom of speech, like all of you guys on the council try to do. So again, Ron, I thank you for 24 years. I appreciate it. Standing in there, putting up with all the guff is appreciated on my side and in my community, old community. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Mr. Steve Arman. Please state if you live in the community or outside of the community.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Steve Arman, I live in Second Street Southwest. I see you in a new setting. I'll be joining one of those seats tomorrow morning. I know what it's like to serve, and many of you have served for many years on the council, and many of the public employees here have done a very loyal and dedicated job to serve in our community. Tonight, you know, I could have stayed home and just thought, nah, just another councilman retiring, but I thought, you know, what an opportunity to say thank you, not just around, but to all of you who serve, and all of you who serve our community and take an oath of office. But from 2008 to 2016, I came back for my final eight years as city councilman, served the Third Ward, and I had that opportunity and privilege, and it was great to work for the citizens of Wilmer. Mr. Christensen, your dedication to serving this community and also to serving our military, I understand, shows your commitment to your loyalty to the city, to the state, and to this country. It's unquestionable. All of you who have served here as an elected representative are tested at some time or another on your commitment to your service with honor and fulfillment, and you also have to swear to your oath of office. It's a big commitment, and I'm sure none of you take it lightly. Mr. Christensen, you followed through on this oath unquestionably. I want to thank you, Ron, and thanks to your family for encouraging your commitment, dedication to this community, and your patriotism, and thanks to all of you who are here to serve your community also. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Joe Riddler, please state your name and whether you reside within the community or outside of the community.
Good evening, Council. Joe Riddler, Wilmer. Just wanted to thank you, Ron, for all your service, your dedication. You know, when some of this council that's been elected put you through the grind, we were sitting at the supper table with your mother, and your mother was wondering, why did, why did people hate you so bad? And she had a tear in her eye when you were going through the grind, and some of you people that are elected here were part of that. I wonder what's going to go through your mind when you shake his hand and tell him a good job. It's kind of interesting. As we look at you, you look at us, it's a whole different view. He's a humbled man. He's taught me a lot. I wish you would have got to know him better. You didn't know the guy or the bullshit you put him through. But Ron, thanks. Thanks for being good.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have recognition of Mr. Ron Christensen, councilmember, for his years of service. Ron, I just want to thank you for all that you've done, and you've requested that Mr. Fagerly give you your plaque, and so Mr. Fagerly will be giving you your plaque.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I might tear up here, but I'm going to try. Ron, I am both sad and honored to give you this thank you. I am sad as I'm losing a colleague 24 years on the city council. Ron has been one of the most organized, prepared, and dedicated members in this timeframe. His degree of thought and care for details was unwavering. He was not afraid to start a discussion on any city issue. His opinion was always his honest one. Agree with him or not, you always knew where Ron Christensen stood on any given issue. He was a councilmember that didn't always take the easy road. He took the road that he felt was the right one. He always tried to do what the majority of his constituents wanted, and there's no doubt in my mind that if he wanted a seventh term, he would have won again. I will always remember the major decisions we had over the years, such as getting the waste treatment plant out of the city limits, getting the new airport, and one of his favorite accomplishments, the Midwest Campus. I will also never forget, when discussing concrete streets and concrete park pads, we should always install insulation underneath to give them a longer life expectancy. Ron was born and raised here in Wilmer. He left to serve the U.S. Air Force and came back to Wilmer to raise his family and start their family business with his brothers, Christensen Brothers Construction, which is still in operation today, which is exactly what we are trying to do today, to get all of our kids to come back home to the Wilmer area to work and/or start a business, but most of all, to raise their families. Ron, wife Janine, and their entire family have been dedicated and a giving family to this community for years, and I know they will continue to give back to the community in a different way going forward. I'm now happy for you, Ron, that you can do what you want, when you want, and you do not have to have any more sleepless nights thinking about the tasks at hand. You have done your service and stayed true to yourself, your family, and your constituents. Congratulations and a big thank you from the citizens of Wilmer, city staff, city council, and from the mayor's office. Thank you again, Councilman Ronald Christensen, for your dedication in serving in the U.S. Air Force and for your 24 years of service to the citizens of Wilmer. We appreciated it. Good luck in your next journey, and God bless America. With that, I have a plaque.
It's pretty humbling. 24 years on the council. I recall the very first meeting I went to back in January of 1995. We were dealing with Elm Lane closure, and we held this meeting over at the senior high school, the little theater. I drove my daughter's car over there out of fear, not knowing what's going to happen. And after the meeting, remember, this is one of my first meetings, Channel 7 was there, Channel 9 was there, and they came to me and asked questions, and somehow I made it through there. But I humbly want to thank everybody who stood with me and voted for me and the constituents that called me. The many years I was on the council, I didn't just act for my ward. There were many people across the city that called me that had a problem, wanted me to get it fixed, and that was my, the pleasure that I got out of serving on this council was not so much dealing with the everyday budgets and that, but it's people that called and said, you know, I got a tree down from the boulevard and it's laying in between my house and the neighbors, can you get it fixed? Can somebody come over and fix it? Or I wrecked my boat on the ramp out at Foot Lake, you know, can I get reimbursed for that because the city should have had that repaired? So I was humbly serving people, that I enjoyed mostly, and I want to thank the staff, past and present, and my good friend Mick, if you're out there watching, Mick, thanks for putting up with me the years that you were there. He laid the groundwork pretty much for what's happening in Wilmer today with current and past staff. I can't thank Bruce and Steve and the chief and Sean and the other department heads enough. They put up with my contrarianism, or whatever you want to call it. But thank you, and God bless the current council and the one next year. Always think about what those people back in your ward are thinking. I've said this many times, and it's so easy for a group of people to get up in front of that podium and ask for something and convince us to give it to them, whether it's TIF or tax abatement, or whatever it may be. But you have to think about that person that voted for you in your ward. We need to, I suggested a couple weeks ago, that it's individual liberty that our constitution guarantees, and that the government shouldn't have so much power. So think about these people when you're voting on anything. TIF districts, tax abatement, higher taxes mean a lot to the retired people in Wilmer that are living on a fixed income, and I would just ask the present or the future council to always think about that. About six months ago, I mentioned, I think, Councilor Schwante said, I was going to have a band made up for you to wear when I left. It was going to be WWRD. What would Ron do? You could look at that whenever you're making a decision, but again, thank you so very much, and I have that most respect for the rest of you here, and that you will lead the city of Wilmer on and into the future. And thank you, Marv, for doing what you do as mayor. We'll continue with the meeting.
Thank you for your comments. Next is consideration of the Baker dugout project. Mr. Rob Baumgartner, parking wreck. I see you have a sidekick along, too.
He asked me to join him, so I was so scared.
Thanks, Kurt. Mayor, member of the councils, I'm back again.
Mayor, members of the councils, I'm back again to talk to you about the Baker dugout project. Briefly, again, that the dugouts need to be repaired. Kurt Hein, Rick Morrison, and I have been working on some plans together, just so that we remember that the boosters would donate $10,000 towards this project, and they would like to have the advertising rights for the top of the dugouts. So we worked together as staff and with the baseball boosters on two options. Option A would be to build the dugouts with a split face block that would match the concession stand and the other buildings that are out there, and that would be at $52,000. Option B would be, the dugouts would be built out of wood and then covered with steel, and that would be $41,000. So our recommendation is from staff to go with option A. This would provide a solid structure and would provide a longer use of life than B. The bigger question would be, the staff would also recommend to reappropriate $42,000 from the CIP of the Sperry and Hilltop Tennis Courts project for this dugout project. And then the rest of the dollars would be around, $100,000 would go just for Sperry Tennis Park or the tennis courts. So if you take the $10,000 out of the 52, that's where we get the $42,000 at. So that's what the financial impact would be, about $42,000 out of the CIP for the tennis court project to do it for the dugouts instead of having it come out of operations.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move their recommendation.
Second.
Most of them made in second to move the recommendation for the consideration of Baker dugout for option A or option B. Oh, the recommendation, option A. And then take the funds from the CIP. Additional discussion. Councilmember Nelson, followed by Mesky.
Supportive of doing it, just a question with what we were going to do at Miller. I know there was a hope for Sperry to be able to be pickleball courts mined. So what are we, what were we doing at the tennis courts and what won't we be doing?
At Sperry?
At Sperry and Hilltop.
Well, there's $150,000 in the CIP for those two tennis courts. We talked to staff that $150,000 isn't going to do a whole lot for the three courts, basically the two courts at Sperry and the one at Hilltop. So what we would do is concentrate with the rest of those funds just for Sperry to make those into top-notch courts with the pickleball lines and everything that we would get from USTA.
Okay. What was the plan at Hilltop to do the same thing?
I think, to be honest with you, I don't think there was enough funds to even do the two projects together.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, Mesky.
Followed then, what will become of Hilltop?
We would have to look at that for a future project.
If there had been enough funds, what would you be doing with the Hilltop?
We'd probably look at to see if we would have to resurface it or if it would just be repainting the courts with the blended lines for pickleball as well.
Okay, this is a resolution. I'm sorry. Isn't it a resolution because we're spending money and moving money? I've got a list of that it's a motion, but we're moving money out of capital, moving it into a project, so that's a resolution, correct? Roll call.
Why don't you do a resolution?
Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantus.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. I want to thank staff for the work on this, also to thank the baseball boosters. I know that this has been a project you've been wanting to do for a long time, and thank you for being a partner with the city of Wilmer on, again, yet another project. You know, if we look at the biggest project you guys did, that's Towne Stadium. You did a very nice job there, and the continuation of this for the dugouts will really be an added value for the citizens of Wilmer. So thank you for your work. Next on the agenda is consideration of the Wilmer Y. Mr. Sean Christensen, our Public Works Director.
Mayor members of the council, if you recall, I think it was two weeks ago, it might have been four weeks ago, I can't remember, when Mr. Paul Rasmussen with MNDOT was here discussing the massive amount of agreements that you were going to see. I trust that that was met with clarity when you saw the 90-some-odd pages of agreements that are staring at everyone. Including in these agreements are master cooperative agreement, permanent pipeline easement agreement, purchase and sale agreement, cooperative construction agreement, and then I just noticed as reading through this, there's one that's not listed there, but I believe was included in your packet, and that would be the turnback agreement. Of course, these agreements are only the ones that the city is involved in. There are a number of other agreements, I believe, that were included for your reading pleasure. With that being said, I think Paul can come up and answer any questions you may have, but the recommendation tonight would be, of course, would be to adopt a resolution, and I think we've got it narrowed down to one resolution to authorize signatures to sign all these agreements.
Counsel, what do you wish to do?
Motion to approve resolutions.
Second. Most of them made in second to approve the consideration of the Wilmer Y agreements. Discussion or questions for Mr. Rasmussen? Councilmember Plowman.
Sorry, not for Mr. Rasmussen, but for our city attorney.
Mr. Scott.
I assume you've had a chance to review these as best as possible. Nothing jumped out at you as being concerning?
That's correct. Mayor, members of the council, I have actually been extensively involved in negotiating, I believe, each of these agreements for the city. The master agreement, which is, I believe, the first document before you, was largely in place when I got involved. I was extensively involved with council for BNSF and MNDOT in negotiating the purchase agreement by which the city will be conveying the parcels needed for the Rail Y corridor to BNSF, as well as a pipeline easement agreement. And so the council knows why the pipeline easement agreement came about. At the southernmost parcel of the rail corridor that the city is conveying to BNSF, the city's sanitary sewer mains, taking all of the city's sewage, and I believe also from Jennio, to the wastewater treatment plant cross the corridor. BNSF's initial position was to treat them like any other utility crossing of a railroad, which means they would give you essentially a license agreement, which amounts to their permission to allow the pipes to stay, but that they would be subject to BNSF's requirement that the city remove those or relocate them at the city's expense. So obviously, that was not going to work for the city, so we negotiated an easement agreement instead, and that's what you have in your packet. Under the easement agreement, the city has a permanent property right to keep those mains there. BNSF insisted on having the right to require the city to relocate those at some point in the future, but it would be entirely at BNSF's expense. Would that ever happen, and we think that's very unlikely.
Okay. Yeah, that was my main question, actually, was, did we get that to stick in the contract? And it's a lot of pages.
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you.
Just Councilmember Nelson.
Just a question, are we the first in line to sign these documents?
Yes, ma'am. I'll be back here tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock to discuss the same thing with the Candy Line County, and then the documents will be going to BNSF for their signature and then back to MNDOT.
Okay. Then what happens after they're signed?
Once they're signed, we'll be able to award our design, build, and construction contract, and they'll start their design work. MNDOT will also start an ALTA survey, which will be necessary for all the land transfers between all the parties. So we'll start that, and we should get our first land transfer. I think it's scheduled for the 31st of March. So that survey will be completed, we'll start, we'll get that land transfer on the 31st of March, and we should start construction sometime in April. We're hoping about mid to late April.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mesky.
The only asset that the city of Wilmer has put through then is our property. There is no additional cost to the city for the Y project?
Councilmember Mesky, that is, I think, almost entirely, if not entirely, correct. We worked hard, and MNDOT actually volunteered to help us through an impasse with BNSF over who would be involved in sort of the accompanying costs of a real estate transaction. So the title commitment, the survey cost, legal descriptions, MNDOT has volunteered to do that on behalf of all the public partners.
Well done. Councilman Schwantus.
Thank you. I just want to say, this is a big deal. This is a really big deal, and for us to be to this point, I want to thank the people who were most involved in making this happen, and I'm very thankful that we were able to wrap it up before Mr. Peterson left and retired. But really, thank you wholeheartedly for all the work and effort that's gone into this. It's truly, it will be beneficial to our city. Thank you.
Additional comments? Okay, we're ready to approve the resolution. Roll call.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, before you vote, if I could just clarify a couple of changes to the resolution that you have in your packet. The first one Sean mentioned, but a fifth agreement needs to be listed, and that's the State of Minnesota Trunk Highway Jurisdictional Transfer Agreement. And then I'd also request that a clause be added, essentially saying that each of the contracts are approved in substantial conformity with the drafts included in your packet. And the reason for that is because I am aware that there are some last-minute, very minor details still being changed, and they might have some minor changes to what's before you, so I don't want to have to come back later to get something reapproved.
Is it okay for the motioner in a second?
I'm okay.
It's fine.
So then we would approve as amended. So a resolution to approve as amended. Additional discussion.
Just a clarification, that last document he mentioned, is that the document that was referred to as the turnback agreement?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. It was a long title there, I wasn't sure.
Additional comments? Questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Osmas.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantus.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, and I'd just like to say, thank you to the city staff, Bruce Peterson, Sean Christensen, and Robert Scott for all their help getting this done. We wouldn't have got through this agreement without them. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will have the legacy grant amendment from the work session, and this is a Robins Island Regional Park Legacy Grant Funding Amendment that removes the boardwalk portion of it.
Mayor members of the council, as mentioned earlier, bear with me while I grab the correct document here. As mentioned earlier by Stuart Crosby with SRF, in front of you, or in front of you at the work session, rather, was the modification of the scope of the legacy grant for Robins Island. In a nutshell, what this does is removes, temporarily removes, the interpretive boardwalk in an effort to add those funds to the Four Seasons Shelter, which has yet to be decided what that exactly looks like by you folks. But it has been initially approved by the commission staff, who has done a site visit and a walk-through, and so the award amount has not changed, but the scope of what that award amount can be used for has. And so in front of you is the request to approve amendment number one for the grant contract for Robins Island Regional Park.
So moved.
Second.
Most of them made in second to approve amendment one to the legacy grant for Robins Island Four Seasons. No, I'm sorry.
Regional Park.
Amendment one for legacy grant for Robins Island Regional Park. Is that correct? Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantus.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next is an update to the Planning and Development Director job description.
As discussed in the work session this evening, we updated the Director of Planning and Development Services' job description since it hadn't been looked at since 2014. And with one change to the one in your packets, we wanted to add back in the airport manager under the supervisors category.
Moved to approve. Second. Most of them made in second to approve the amended public, or Planning Development Director job description, putting back in the airport functions under the responsibility of the Planning and Development Director. Discussion. Councilmember Mesky.
If this is approved tonight, how fast will we be beginning the search for this position?
Immediately.
Perfect. Okay.
Additional discussion. So we'll update that site?
Yep. Yep. It can be easily.
Councilmember Schwantus.
I would ask, what type of recruitment efforts are we going to be doing?
A lot of online posting. I cannot remember the name of them, but Bruce has given me several websites to go to to post, as well as Indeed, Minnesota Works, our website, the newspaper, and any suggestions you have, I will definitely take.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just, do you do that with the League of Minnesota Cities and?
Yep, we post with them as well as a member.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Additional discussion. This is a simple motion, correct? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Was the poll the same sign? That motion does carry. Next is the end date for the early retirement program. Ms. Beckman.
Again, as discussed in the work session, we discussed several options for ending the early retirement program. I believe option number two is the recommendation for tonight's council meeting, which would be discontinuing eligibility for the program, so only the employees eligible as of December 31st, 2018 are entered into the program.
Okay, Councilmember Mesky.
I'd refer to the city attorney, Robert Scott, that, I don't think we picked either option A or B, but just the caveat of when we're ending eligibility only, but.
Yes, thank you, mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Mesky. I think what the council's consensus was in the work session was, rather than decide tonight between option one and option two as presented in the staff report, you would take an interim measure and pass a resolution tonight to essentially cut off eligibility so that no employees will become eligible for the program after a certain date. The date suggested was January 1st. I would recommend that be tweaked slightly to be the effective date of the resolution. The resolution would take effect in 30 days. It would pass tonight, the vote would happen tonight, the effective date of the resolution would be in 30 days.
I'd offer that. Is that a resolution?
Yes.
I'd offer that resolution.
Second.
Most of them made in second for a resolution to have an end date for the early retirement program 30 days from today's date. Discussion. Councilmember Osmas.
So, when you say eligible, does that then include the 31 that are eligible right now, or it includes nobody?
Everyone who is currently eligible, or I suppose who became eligible for the program before the effective date 30 days from tonight, would still be eligible under this resolution. The city council could take future action at an upcoming meeting to further alter the, either the cutoff date of the program altogether, or the eligibility for the program, or specific retirement deadlines in a subsequent resolution to be drafted and presented at a future meeting.
Councilmember Mesky.
I think I know the answer, but, HR director, how many people will become eligible with the 30-day?
Zero.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just briefly describe- Mr. Mayor, if I could just briefly describe the resolution. I did circulate one. Unfortunately, it's not in your packet. We're just making a slight alteration to what I sent out earlier. The resolution, and the reason we wanted to do it by resolution, is to essentially document the history of this program and the recitals. This resolution does that, starting with the program enacted in 2004. It traces the history until today. It then simply states that you will be amending the program as mentioned, to cut off eligibility on the effective date of the resolution in 30 days.
Okay. So, I just have to ask a procedural question. So, you already have a resolution in place that has a sunset date on it. You've already approved that as a council. Now, you're putting out another date, and then in the work session, we talked about putting out another date. So, all we're doing is taking, putting our staff through the wringer. You're kicking the can down the road, and now you're going to have another resolution, and then if you come back in two weeks and make another resolution, I mean, you're going to come back in two weeks and make another resolution. What are you doing? Counselmember Mesky.
I would disagree with your assessment. What we have done is, at some point, you had to say, we're going to put an end of the program, and we have a firm number of 31, and now we are ending the program with a firm number of 31. Now, what becomes of those 31 employees and their eligibility for the program remains as the unresolved issue. But I would argue that we actually did end it with a firm number of eligibility. All we did, and the other one, was say, all future hires after a particular date would not be eligible. We had no idea what the number could be. Now, we have a number, so I don't see this kicking the can down the road. It's very precision kicking now at this point. We know exactly what the can is, and now it's a matter of what we're going to do with it next meeting.
Thank you. Counselmember Nelson.
We also indicated that at the next meeting, we will have two options to make a decision on. And that will be coming back to us on the first meeting in January, correct? Wasn't that our instructions? So, is that a second motion, or?
I think, sorry.
Counselmember Mesky.
I think the city attorney has said that he's already got the framework of the option A, he's going to build the framework of option B. And so, I think a clear message to the employees is, apparently, this program, as of 30 days, there's no one eligible for that program. The 31 that were eligible, then I would agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that we don't have a clear direction of what's going to happen with those 31 employees. They're either going to all be taken off of it within a timeframe, or they're going to roll off.
So, the question I have is, can we hire anybody before January 1st of 2018?
Of 2019?
2018. Because that's the end date. That's currently in the resolution, correct?
Nineteen.
The, right now, it ended as of 1/118 for anyone hired that day or later.
Right.
And so far, there has been no motion to end eligibility for the program. But in the next 30 days, no one will hit their 20-year mark and become eligible.
Okay. Additional discussion? Counselmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are we going to give some instruction as far as what we want for option B, as far as, do we want to maintain this five-year gap, or do we want to have them reduce it, or?
Counselmember Alvarado, just listening to the discussion in the work session, I think I have an idea, and I can work with the HR Director and our Labor Attorney to come up with a proposal, essentially, or a option for you to consider. I obviously don't have the, all the i's dotted and t's crossed, exactly what the council's looking for, but I think I have the gist.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's the council's job to discuss this, make a decision. It isn't to ask our HR Director and the Attorney to come up with a solution. We are supposed to have the solution, agree on it, and pass it. And I agree with the mayor, we're just, the employees are sitting out there wondering what's going to happen. They waited two weeks for tonight to happen, and another two weeks to find out how it's going to be tweaked. I suspect it's going to be number two that's going to be tweaked, and they're probably all wondering, when is this going to get done? We've agreed it needs to sunset, I mean, it ends, not sunset, but end. And we need to make that decision, or you all do in two weeks. You come up with a solution, and have them, have Mr. Scott write it up, which is pushing everything forward, all our decisions, and it needs to be made. I would say tonight, but it's not going to be.
Counselor Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I agree with you that time is of the utmost importance. We don't want any employees to feel like they're hanging by a thread, or walking a tightrope, waiting on our decision. But in fairness, in order to make a good, just, and sound decision, I think we need to have good information in front of us. And as for myself, I am in favor of a sunset. I'm in favor of a sunset provision that is a quicker sunset provision than the numbers that were on the screen in front of us. And I think in order to make a competent decision, it would behoove us all to have a new write-up with those numbers that we could look at before making that decision, because otherwise, we'd sit here verbally discussing numbers and timelines and stuff like that, and that would just convolute the entire discussion. So, that's all I'm hoping for in the process, is to just get maybe some new information in front of our eyes that would help bring clarity and help the decision-making process. So, if that's kicking the can down the road, guilty, but I believe it's the best, the best thing to do for the good of our employees and ourselves at this table. Thank you.
Additional discussion? All in, I'm sorry, roll call.
Counselmember Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
No.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
No.
Schwantis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
No.
Mesky.
Aye.
Five ayes and three nays.
That the resolution passes. Next is Finance Committee report.
This report is somewhat of a prelude before the year-end report that we are working on and have had conversations with the departments, and the processes that they are required to do between now and the end of the year, so that we can process payments and get invoices on a daily basis. We've talked about this a number of times. The major projects that we are looking at here on the City Hall was planned for this year. There were some preliminary costs there. That will move forward then in 19, as it stands at this point. The refrigeration system at the Civic Center, we do have a payment in process, which would change the balance of that, that we processed in December, to $1.5 million of that project still to be processed between now and, I think, the completion date, the engineer told me, is the first part of June. So, in the first five months of 19, we'll be processing $1.5 million. Hopefully, the project will be at or below budget. The pavement projects, again, as part of the year-end process, we reconcile. The pavement and stormwater projects, we've discussed in the past, that the Western Collector will need to have some discussions as part of the year-end financing to finance a gap in that project that is coming in at above where we had bonded for. We've talked about the cooperative projects, as they are listed there. The main apron expansion will not happen this year. It is in the capital improvement for the airport. The city's contribution for that entire project was $31,500. Those dollars would be available to, again, carry forward if that project gets funded for 19. If that project doesn't get funded by the state and feds in 19, those dollars will be available to be re-appropriated, and will be given to the mayor in the process for the 2020 budget. The other projects there, there were some adjustments there, and pretty much washed out. They didn't do the Navaid roads that covered the plan update, and the reclamation covered the, or the tiling and drainage that covered the reclamation. The projects at the end there, Robins Island, you had discussion earlier on in your work session in regards to that project, and also planned for 18 was an amphitheater.
Mr. Okens, under the Robins Island part, the grant was for $606,000, correct?
Correct.
And this budget shows $856,000, and the council approved $250,000 for that project, correct?
That's correct.
So, the numbers that were shown tonight are not consistent with the numbers that are in front of us here on this document. So, what are the correct document numbers?
These numbers are the correct budgeted numbers. The numbers in the grant were reduced. The original grant project that was requested was $1 million. The city's contribution of the $250 that they had as a matching part of that grant application remained appropriated, but was $175,000 is what the state obligated, leaving $75,000 still appropriated by the city, but not needed to complement or fulfill the city's requirements under the grant that was awarded. Of that $75,000, the council has appropriated 17 of that for the lights, and leaving it $58,000 still available for improvements at Robins Island.
So, in theory, that $58,000 could be moved to that item, seeing that it was short-funded?
That's correct, as well as if the amphitheater is not done at this time, or next year, or is incorporated into the local option sales tax, and when that gets approved, the city's match on that was $170,000, which also could be re-appropriated.
Thank you.
The minor projects that were not bonded or cost shared with other operations, the primary ones there were the waste treatment and the three lift stations are coming in at about where they were projected at. We had some PFA financing to fund those costs, and are being incorporated, the repayment of that, those bonds are incorporated into our rate study, which is shortly ready, coming to the council, and will be discussed with the year-end process as well. That loan or borrowing was at 1.1%. There's a number of projects there that you see that will not transpire this year. The street sewer replacement, that will be funded and going into the previous page under the street. But the rest of the waste treatment projects you see there, if not done, which there are some that aren't, that we've talked about in previous months, those will go back into the waste treatment fund, and will be available for future capital projects. Some that are being discussed are the Eagle Lake Sewer District, which the city will take over on January 1. The two vehicles that you see there have been ordered and are projected to come in at about $88,000, less than the 222 that you see there. That, again, will go into the waste treatment fund, and again, available for, since the waste treatment fund is an enterprise account. You do see, under the Police Department, the squad cars did come in a little over. We will be discussing finance and coming back to you. There was a robot that was projected, or funded, that was not purchased, would be a possible source. As I mentioned in the past, the areas that we look at are within the departments. If there's overages, if there aren't, we look at additional revenues and other departments, and those types of declining processes for funding anything that may have come over. The Fire Department and Public Works, the Public Works vehicles came in under, and that will be, again, looked at to help fund some overages in the lift that was done at the garage, a possible funding that overage, as well as the fuel tanks are projected to be over as well. The other, on the third page there, the Information Systems, all those projects are finalized, so those dollars will be available. And again, past practice has been where these dollars will be given to the mayor when he works on his 2020 budget, or if the council chooses to change that process, could be appropriated at any time, either after the retreat, or at any time during the year discussions. I mentioned the search robot, outdoor sirens, and the fire pumper, those have been completed. The outdoor siren was not going to be purchased this year, will carry over again until next year as well. Counselmember Osmus.
So, IT has $19,000?
That's correct, and those projects have been completed, and will be available, again, to cover any overages, or be re-appropriated, or, again, given to the mayor in the next budgeting cycle, whatever the council chooses to do. Same with the auditorium, those costs, those projects will not happen in 18 as well. That's about $175,000. The lighting has been completed, the ceiling and the tuck pointing have been on there for a couple of years, as we've discussed. The tuck pointing, at one point, the season of when they would have to tarp it and those types of things, it's not going to happen. Plus, the decision of what to do with the building has delayed some of those improvements as well. The leisure services, we will and have had discussions with the Park Department and the project manager of putting together a final report. I know there's been some concern about some playground equipment installation. Those costs have not been paid, and will have to be covered by the dollars that are remaining in there as well. Moving into the operating budget, as you see there, we are projecting that our revenues for 2018 will be about online of where we had projected. Cash flow is always an item that we discuss and talk about in our investments as well. You'll see there that our property taxes are at about 97%. Part of that, under general property taxes, includes the franchise fee. Our actual property taxes collections for 2018 were at 98%. That's about online of where it normally is. The other 2% trickles in in the following year. So, we have no tax-forfeited properties. If the council remembers, we did have some that went on the tax forfeiture in a subdivision, but those were all resold, and so we have no properties that would be on the tax-forfeited list at this point. The licenses and permits is where the building permits are showing, we're showing, and that will help in discussions in some of the departments as we move forward in the planning on the following pages. They are at $94,000 over what we had projected. We talked about that last month, when we talked about the amount of activity that we have going on, the possible development in the industrial park, and the other commercial activities have generated more. If we have the same amount of activity in 2019 as we had in 18, it should be probably, based on our discussion last month, about where we had projected, and that's why we decided to leave that at our last meeting discussions. Civic Center and Park and Rec is why you see the service charges a little lower. Again, we should be at about 92%, but the Civic Center ice time and those types of things happen now in December, and the billings and those. And then the Park and Rec, we're still working with the school district as far as reconciling that changeover of that whole program and those months on that. The miscellaneous revenue are about online. The other financing sources, the two main sources there are the Caris Health Transfer and the Waste Treatment Administrative Transfer, as well as the Municipal Utilities Fourth Quarter Intergovernmental Transfer as well. Under the administration part of the budgets, I talked about the Planning and Developmental Services. Again, we had a pro- Again, we had a pro agreement with the former building inspector, which added some additional costs in there, and those building permit revenues will cover those and will have those recommendations for discussion in the January meeting. The non-departmental, again, as we have more and more people retire, that's where we have the reimbursements, where the individuals will pay a portion or all of their health insurance. And so we bring it in on the revenue side under miscellaneous and then pay it through the city. And so that's why you see that, as we have more people retire than what we had planned. Police Department, we've had discussions there. They're going to be real tight, but, again, we have meetings scheduled for Wednesday with all the departments to review their budgets, and they've had schedules where they turn in their bills monthly or daily now until through the 10th of January. And so we'll have a better idea, and we have ongoing conversations with all departments to watch their. Fire protection, we've mentioned that before, the number of fire calls are down. And then you move down into the Public Works area, and, again, Public Works is right at their budget, but with no snow, we are projecting that they will probably come in under budget as well. Moving on to the recreational and non-departmental, Rec 8 has experienced an overage. That is due to, from what I'm told, the additional work sessions and those types of filming of different meetings, the budgetary meetings, some other meetings that we have broadcast. So we've increased their projections for next year. Non-departmental, cultural and rec, that was for the $5,000, basically for the Wilmer, Christmas for Wilmer Fest, taking over the parade for that. And then the Aquatic Center, there were some personnel costs there that caused that to go over. That was in relationship to competition to get lifeguards as far as rates on the county and those types. Intergovernmental Waste Treatment Plant, I mentioned that we have been contacted. The rate study is almost complete. We are on projections there. There is no projected increase at this point for 2019, and we are in discussions with, in relationship to the Eagle Lake Sewer District, to see what kind of effects that will have, and we'll have those discussions in our future meetings. Investments, you'll see there that the two accounts with Bremmer and Heritage are liquid accounts. It's about $10 million. That seems like a lot to have liquid, but we have did our projections. January is a big month for bond payments. We have almost $4.5 million in bond payments that go out in January alone. We have the bills that were before you tonight is 800,000. We have a couple of bond payments, there's another million, plus the construction that we have for the R22, it's another million and a half. So that's, you know, roughly $7 million that will go out. And so that other $3 million is our cash flow, and we work closely with the local banks to handle that. We've talked about our unload of our investments that we at Finance Incorporated or got from the city clerk's office when we took it over. So we're working with trying to ladder our investment portfolio as well. With that, I'd happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Fager. So on the bond payments, is it you and administrator that are dealing with this now or who's making the payments?
The bond payments. The council has enacted a resolution that authorizes three positions to handle all the banking accounts, including bond payments. That's the city administrator, the finance director and the accounting coordinator, and it takes two signatures of any of those three to process any of that.
The county? What did you say?
Accounting.
Oh, county?
Accounting coordinator.
Okay. It's not the city clerk, anyway?
No, that was changed.
Two years ago. Thank you.
Just no questions. Thank you for your report. Next, we have the School-City Facilities Agreement, Mr. Rob Baumgartner. I always say your name wrong, but you know who you are, don't you?
I know who I am.
Okay, good.
Mayor member of the councils tonight, I'm going to talk to you about the City and School Facility Agreement. A little history on it, when WCR was in operation, we shared our facilities at no cost to each other. So now the community head director and myself was working on a agreement to use each other's facilities. So we would be able to use school facilities and the school would be able to use city facilities without any charging besides any of the consumables that would happen, per se, overtime for any of public work staff or custodial staff, paint or chalk. Currently, right now, during the transition, we are working together with the facilities. We're not charging each other right now. And the school board did approve this agreement at their last board meeting on December 10. What happens too is that the Park and Rec staff will reserve the city facilities and the school has a person that will reserve the school facilities. So it's a recommendation, adopt the resolution to approve the city and city, or the school and city facility agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Also made in second to approve the agreement between the school and the city for the use of facilities, discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
So a question. FIED classes, they get to use the Civic Center for free in the high school?
Yes, they come over and do FIED classes just to learn to skate.
Now, who pays for the hockey programs, the school, the girls and the boys? That's a different fund?
That comes from the athletic department.
The school board gets additional funds from someone, don't they?
Yeah, they have a, the athletic director has a fund that they tap into for ice rental.
They have to pay them?
Yes, they will still pay for their ice rental.
All right. Thank you.
Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Maskey?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Adai, Cionese?
Resolution passes. Next is the 292 report, Mr. Sean Christensen.
Mayor members of the council in front of you, actually, it would have been in the work session packet.
I think if you toggle over, you can pull it up on here if you want.
If it's still here.
And it's page 50.
No, this is council agenda, the other ones must have been removed.
Okay, it was just up there, but, okay.
All right. So in your work session packet, page 50, is the agreement with 292, and the reason it's back in front of you today is there was some discussion on bringing it back to make a finality of this agreement and of this report. So if you'll recall, it's been a couple of months now, representatives from 292 Group was here, presented the master plan of the Civic Center campus concept and presented that at that time that included the additional buildings. It included such things as future facility building and structures, future roads, Civic Center, curling facility, locker room space, refrigeration plant, fieldhouse, indoor track, indoor turf fields, additional sheets of ice. And at that point, we asked 292 Group to halt what they were doing because the sales tax group was moving forward and we were looking forward to that vote. So for you tonight, a couple of alternatives to discuss is we can either cease the contract with 292 Group and accept the work completed to date, or we can continue the contract, the original contract with 292, rather, that would include programming needs and projections.
Councilor, what are your wishes?
Ask a question?
Councilor Nelson.
The recommendation is to accept the concept, so I'm assuming that's terminating the contract and just accepting the work that's been done to date?
That is the recommendation.
Okay.
To accept the drawings and concept as presented.
So just accepting the concept, so we aren't, I mean, we aren't with that as information that we're receiving, correct?
No, my recommendation would be to accept the plans that was provided to us as a working document.
Okay, but that terminates their contract, correct?
Not the original contract, which, so then we would have to have the vote of the council to terminate the contract.
That's your recommendation though, correct?
My recommendation would be to continue the contract, but I believe there is enough conversation to halt the contract as is and see how the lost funds or the sales tax funds come out.
I'd make the motion to accept the documents that we currently have and cease the contract with 292 Group.
Second. Also made in second to accept the documents as presented and cease continued work with 292 Design Group. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Christensen, thanks for the information. 292 Group, can you give us a little bit of background, what they do? Are they a civil engineering firm or are they a consulting firm? Do they subcontract their engineering services? Do they do it all in-house?
292 Group is a recently created company from, that have come from different consulting groups. They are consulting. They do, as this indicates, they do a lot of planning documentation. I believe they do have engineers on staff as well, but their majority focus is planning.
So as a follow-up, likely say we stuck with the contract with them, decided to build all these facilities, they designed and built facilities, they likely wouldn't be the ones stamping the designs that would consist of other, likely, other engineered designs that had been subcontracted out?
Right. I hesitate to answer that because I don't know the exact answer to their capabilities.
Would, in your opinion, are we going to have a relatively easy time finding the engineering services competitively locally in the upper Midwest here to accomplish what we want to accomplish?
Yes.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you're recommending to cease the contract and take the drawings? That's what I'm understanding?
My personal recommendation would be to continue the contract as originally approved, which would include programming and projections.
So you're suggesting number two on this, alternatives?
Correct. If you ask my personal opinion, yes. I believe the general consensus would be to go with number one.
That the motion?
Number one is the motion.
Yes, and number one is the motion, that's correct.
As our engineer, you're suggesting one, but as a citizen, you're saying two? Is that what I'm understanding?
I'm saying number two as an engineer and a citizen.
Okay. That's what I was trying to get at.
Councilmember Osmus.
Can you explain why?
There was obviously a reason we wanted that programming and projections included in the original contract, and I believe that we hired the right company at the time when they put in their proposals, and I think we should let them continue their original scope.
Councilman Nelson.
They ceased work on this how long ago?
Six months, probably.
Okay, thank you.
Additional discussion. Councilman Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One final question. The amount of work that they've done to date, that's all done and paid for? And, I mean, is there, is that work that's been done to this point beneficial to how we're going to move forward to it? Is there going to, is there value in that to carry it forward with the next engineering firm that we work with?
Sure, Councilmember Plowman, the answer to both or all of those questions is yes. Definitely value in this. I think it goes along hand in hand with the sales tax conversation because it's facilities that are talked about within the sales tax conversation. And I think this is a great document to have as a planning document, as a master plan document for that campus area.
May I have one more? Okay, then I'll leave you alone, I promise. Then the next step in the process would be if hypothetically the contract is ceased, the next step in the process would be an RFP for a new engineering firm?
I believe your next step, as you've already planned, is this retreat and kind of put in priorities to the sales tax conversation, and then, yes, RFPs for consulting firms to do the planning for whichever your priorities are that are top on your list.
Got it, thank you very much.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Should we, should we wait to decide on this till after the retreat? No? No, that's fine, and I'm asking the question.
It's up to the council.
I think they've given their opinion.
Additional discussion. Okay, so the motion on the table is to cease contract with 292 Design Group and include work completed to date. Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
I'm going to abstain.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
No.
Osmus?
Aye.
Maskey?
No.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays and one abstain.
Resolution passes. Next is professional services proposal from Bolton and Mink. Mr. Bruce Peterson is who I have on the list here.
Mayor and council, the city has received a work order proposal for professional services related to runway and taxiway rehabilitation. This is the second work order for Bolton and Mink that would be for pavement rehabilitation. The city has in its CIP for 2019 funding to make repairs to the runway and taxiway and to the west taxi lanes. The city has retained Bolton and Mink previously. They provide on an annual basis the professional services proposals to design projects and inspect those projects that are approved under the City of Wilmer and State of Minnesota CIPs. The runway, taxiway and west taxi lanes are all in need of work. There is no pavement failure, it's simply aging, and what is being proposed for the rehabilitation is consistent with what needs to be done to prolong the life of the pavement. And that would include crack sealing, removing and replacement of existing sealants on joints, the identification of pavement that would require full-depth patching, and the application of an asphalt seal coat for runway 1331, taxiway A and the west taxi lanes. As I mentioned, the work is included in the CIP for 2019. The financing is available. There are adequate funds to cover the project and it's recommendation of staff that the council adopt a resolution accepting the professional services agreement from, or professional services proposal from Bolton and Mink and authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute that resolution. I will note that a slightly amended resolution was provided to the city clerk by staff on the advice of the city attorney, and that's that the language be added, subject to the terms of the master agreement for airport engineering services with Bolton and Mink. So with that amendment, I'd recommend that the resolution be adopted.
So moved. Also made in second to approve the authorization to execute proposal from Bolton and Mink for airport pavement rehabilitation. Is this a cost share, Mr. Peterson, or not?
I believe there will be grant funds involved in this, and we've got our entitlement funds as well for the city.
Additional discussion. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just mention, from my time in the Airport Commission and overview of the new master plan as it's been unveiled and along with the various projects that have gone on, this engineering firm, not only are they competent and knowledgeable in what they do, but they're also very, when compared to acquiring similar services across the country, they're very competitive as well. So it seems like an easy decision, and it's nice when we have local companies that can make decisions like this easy for us, and I hope that city staff would echo that, because, yeah, it's nice. us, and I hope that city staff would echo that, because yeah, it is, it's nice that we have local firms that can do this quality of work.
I would agree. We get great service from Bolton Mink.
Additional comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Adai, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Thank you for your report. Next wave of city administrator
Mayor and council, I just want to address a few things. First of all, I want to thank everybody that made it possible for Saturday night. We had our second annual holiday party for the employees out at the civic center, and there was Santa out there, and we did some ice skating, and the kids really loved it, having the time out there with their parents and not being crowded. And so I heard a lot of positive comments about that, and I also would like to thank the curling club who showed up and worked with members of, you know, of our staff and taught the kids and the adults how to curl. So thank you for that. Second of all, I'd like to thank, I'd like to have everyone send me event dates for 2019. This is the time of the year that I do my calendar, so if you have an event or you know that you're going to a seminar or a conference this year, if you just send me an email of that date so that I can put that on my calendar. It's something that I do with my staff, but I also ask the council if there's something that you want to make sure that's highlighted on our calendar, please do that. Third, I want to thank the employees, the volunteers for the city, the leadership team, the council. You know, this is our last meeting of 2018, if you can believe it. We've still got a few days left this year, but we did a lot of positive things this year, and Wilmor is doing a lot of positive things as a community. I won't go through the list of things, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, it's important at this time of the year to thank everybody, especially those volunteers that, that don't get any pay or compensation, and they do it because they want to work for this community, and we appreciate that. And fourth, I want to also point out that, you know, the WCR went away this year in August, and I told Rob and I told Dr. Holmes, I said, you know, I didn't know what to expect. Was it going to be, you know, apocalypse, you know, now? But you know what? I have not received one phone call or complaint about this transition. And I asked Dr. Holmes about the same thing, and he said he had not received one complaint or phone call. So I want to congratulate the staff and Rob and the school district making this transition as smooth as possible to all the citizens. And if you do have a complaint, you can always call the mayor, and I'll give you his number. I'm kidding, mayor. Also, just point out that we have the brochures that will be coming out for all the winter sports. Will be out in a few weeks here in the first week or two in January. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Under mayor's comments, I, I do want to echo what Mr. Plowman said. We've had a great year. We've got a lot of good work done this year. It hasn't been easy, but we've gotten it done. I want to give kudos to staff for their work on the stormwater projects. The Bolton Mink report had been in front of us for a long time, and council, you stepped up to the plate and you put that into action. So thank you for doing that. Our community is watching that, so thank you so much. I was at a meeting this morning, and someone told me that we'll be able to have fish in the deep fish pond over behind the Baker Stadium. So I don't know, Mr. Christensen, if that's true or not, but anyways.
That's the first I've heard of that.
So, so, but anyways, they might have crappies over there. We'll check and see. But anyways, and then the other thing I had is Councilmember Fagerly and Councilmember Christensen will remember the conversation we had on Ella Avenue and Highway 7123, and the dangers of that intersection with more and more traffic happening there. And the solution was that Mr. Odens had brought to us when he was the public works director, was to have a culvert under there that people could ride bike under. And I would just like the council to put their thinking hat on about that, and maybe that's something we can look at as a solution as Robbins Island gets more and more use. You know, we have people out there now with Rockin' Robbins. We have people using the, the park year round. So maybe sometime in the next five years, we can put that into our long-term facility improvement plan to where we fund that, because at the time, I don't know, maybe one of the two of you will remember the number, but it wasn't a very high number, as I remembered. And the safety that would be provided to the users would really, I mean, the individual that sent me the email said, you know, he said, I certainly hope somebody doesn't get hurt before something gets done here. So I just want to remind the council of that, put that on our, our to-do list, so get that into, into staff. So with that, I'll go around, and I don't remember who I started with last time, so I'll start with Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Nelson.
I'll just say Merry Christmas, and, and congratulations to Ron on, on your years of service. Wish you the best.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of comments. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank my wife and my family for standing with me all these years. Also, I forgot to mention, I should have been number one. They put up with a lot, a lot of stuff for me, but I am a councilman until January 7th, so if anybody out there has a problem they want solved, you can still call me.
I'll call you.
You've got a few days. And again, thank you to everybody. Thank you to the current council and all the discussions we've had and, and different opinions that we've expressed over the time, but that's what makes this world go around. If we were all the same, it would be a pretty boring world, pretty boring. Don't forget to take the other side of the fence when you're discussing something. Make sure everything gets brought out. But Merry Christmas to everybody, especially everybody in this room, and I thank the, the guys in the high seats over here for some, for coming tonight. And as Walter Cronkite used to say, and that's the way it was, January, or December 17th, 19, 19, 2018, wow, I'm being dated. Thank you, folks.
Councilor Schwantes.
Thank you. Saturday night was a really fun event with the city employees and everyone, and Mr. Holland did a wonderful job acknowledging long-term employees and, and putting the event on, but, but no one returned the recognition to him for his work and effort of putting that event together and, and for coming up with the idea. So I just want to thank you. It was a really great night, and I think it's a wonderful thing to do with employees and staff. So thank you for that, and Merry Christmas to everyone. Happy New Year.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, this is a great time of year. It's peace on earth and goodwill to man kind of time. I want to remind everybody that we've got big basketball tournaments coming up, so take advantage of those, young people playing basketball. Thank you, Ron. I've enjoyed working with you. You, you've got insight in, in what you say. A lot of times I, I, I hear you. I don't always have to agree with you, but I hear you. But I appreciate having the opportunity to sit, sit at the table with you. Feliz Navidad and Merry Christmas to all. Thank you.
Councilmember Osmus.
Thank you. I've got a couple of community center announcements to make. Coming up this Thursday, December 20th, it's a jazzy Christmas. So if you're looking for something to do, come out to the community center at 1 o'clock. The KMS jazz and pop group groups are going to be out there. And then if you are a sewer, mark your calendar for January 19th. We will be sewing veterans' bags for veterans walkers for the VA homes, and so it's going to be a sew-a-thon that day, and there'll be flyers around town, and it'll be starting to advertise that. But if you would like to help with that, that would be great. That'll be, it'll be a lot of fun. Other than that, I just want to wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Councilmember Meske.
Well, the holiday wishes, of course, but I do want to thank personally, thank Ron Christensen. When I came on the council, you always listened, always had an ear, and always treated me with great respect, and I appreciate that. We, we've done lots of meetings where we talked strategy, process, and policy, and I think we actually shared quite a bit in common as far as policy and process are concerned. I do believe that you leave us with a little bit of wisdom of the fear of groupthink. When you have conservative, moderate, and liberal approaches, you really need to visit all of those to make a really good sound decision, and I appreciate that as well. So thank you. I know we will see you, however. To quote, to quote others, you will be back, and I know you'll be standing at that podium, and I will listen very attentively. So thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, wow, this year flew really, really fast, the end of four really quick years. But they've been great years, and I can honestly say that there's been something to learn every single meeting, every single month of every single year. Anxious and looking forward to starting 2019. Thank you to Ron for all your perspective on every issue, because as, as I've learned, you know, working with people from all over the world, no matter what they say, there's always perspective to learn, and there's something to learn from somebody else's perspective. The only way that you don't learn is if the other people don't talk. And so by having somebody who's, who's at the table and who's injecting their ideas and their thoughts and, and whatnot, there's always something to learn. So I appreciate that, and I've appreciated that for the last four years. Everybody have a safe and happy holiday and a blessed New Year.
Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the reminder on that safety issue. I had Ella and Highway 2371. We haven't talked about that for about six or seven years. It needs to be addressed. Thanks again to Ron. It's been a pleasure working with you over 24 years, and have a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and see you next year.
You're kind of most new, Jerry.
I think Mr. Christian, take a second.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.